Six o'clock and we're going to begin the meeting. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am the lead project manager for this project for Settlement Housing Fund. We're really excited that you're here today. This is the second meeting that we've had for the overall tenancy at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two. And we're really excited for you to be here. We wish, of course, that this could be in person, but we're really thankful that there is this miraculous work of being together over the internet. This meeting will go into until around eight o'clock. We will go through an agenda and talk a little bit about the things that we're going to be presenting to you. But first, I actually want to turn it over to our translators for a moment. We have live translation happening for this meeting. So that folks that do not speak English are still able to listen in. So with that, I'm going to hand it over. First of all, why don't we say for Spanish translation to introduce themselves?
Buenas tardes, bienvenidos al Town Hall de Harlem River. Para las personas que desean escuchar esta transmisión a través de su teléfono celular, por favor, marquen desde ahí el número 6465588656 y el número de identificación 9963043769 seguido de la tecla del número o de la tecla de hash. Repito, las personas que requieran escuchar esta presentación con producción simultánea en español, por favor, marcan desde su número celular 6465588656 número de identificación 996304437696 como se muestra en la pantalla. Gracias. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And please can the Haitian Creole interpreter introduce themselves? Catherine, do we have the Haitian Creole? I think that's, is that Tony?
Yeah, I'm just chatting to her there. One second. Sorry.
No, no problem.
We do Mandarin while we wait.
Sure. Let's have the Mandarin interpreter introduce themselves. Do we have Mandarin? I think I saw them on. Great. And could the Haitian Creole translator introduce themselves? Catherine, do we have Haitian Creole?
Okay, um, I thank you. If I couldn't unmute myself. Bonsoir, nous bienvenue de fait que vous avez une réunion à Aswaya. Donc, réunion soit n'ap gagné sous le capteur de l'îne à l'âne à la panne, ce qui c'est Creole haïtien. Donc, si nous gagnons téléphone et téléchargeant ou bien nous gagnons tablette, nous caballes les sous zoom. Et ID zoom d'un C8 3000 42241. Et si nous voulais tordre l'îne à la panne autour, nous capables composer numéro ça qui c'est 6 4 6 5 5 8 8 6 5 6. Et numéro pour nous mettez après ça, c'est 9 8 7 2 1 4 7 6 7 6 8. Et concernant nos capables dans des réunions ça à la langue panne qui c'est Creole la Haïtiens. Merci.
Great. Thank you so much. And with that, we will begin. Let's get started. So once again, my name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager at Settlement Housing Fund. We're really excited to have you here in this, the second resident town hall meeting for the Harlem River Project. First, I just want to say something quickly about the format of the meeting. We mailed paper copies of the presentation slides for the meeting to all households in development. So if you're only able to listen to the audio over your phone, you should be able to follow along on the paper copy of the PowerPoint. The second formatting note to make is that we will publish a recording of this town hall meeting on our website. By the end of next week, the website is www.harlemriver.org. That's www.harlemriver.org. And you can click on tenant meetings at the top. All of our meetings that we do like this are recorded and are published and they're there for you to take a look at. And hopefully there's some useful information for you. Just a couple housekeeping notes. Everyone during the meeting will be muted. The microphone will be muted. And for questions, we will have a Q and A session at the end of the meeting. Just a couple of quick notes about how to ask. Thank you. If you have a question and you want to ask it, you're more than welcome to type it into the chat, the Zoom chat. You can do that at any time. One of our staff members, the director of real estate at Settlement Housing Fund, will be answering some questions in the chat as the meeting is happening. For those questions that Judy isn't able to answer during the meeting, we will save those for the end and we will read them out at the end and ask and answer them at the end. So one more time, you can ask your question at any time by typing it into the chat. Some of the questions will be answered by Judy and I see her typing into the chat right now. The ones that are not answered by Judy will be responded to at the end of the meeting during our Q and A session. When the Q and A session begins to ask a question, you can raise your hand in Zoom. And the host will, I'll call, one of our staff will call on you, will unmute your microphone and you'll be able to ask your question. If you're using a smartphone to raise your hand, you just tap the screen of the Zoom meeting. A toolbar will appear and you tap Participants and then tap Raise Your Hand. If you're using a computer, you can move your mouse on the Zoom screen to reveal the toolbar at the bottom. Click Participants and click Raise Hand. And then if you're calling into the meeting, use a telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Okay, so this is our meeting agenda. This is what we'll be covering today. The first will be, actually, there's one thing missing that we added late. We're actually going to hear from a word from our partners at NITIA. That will be next. We'll then do a quick recap of last month's meeting, just to cover a few of the things that we discussed last month. Then we're going to review just a list of the, some of the questions that we'll answer today. We'll then go through some of the repairs and upgrades that you'll see in your apartments at Harlem River. We'll then move on and discuss lease signings. Then hiring and training. So that's really will be about jobs and training opportunities for residents of the developments. And then finally, we'll be just going through what to actually expect over the next few months. And then, of course, finally, we'll be having our Q and A session. So with that, I'm going to turn it over quickly to NITIA. I believe Michael Parkinson will be speaking for NITIA. Michael, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you so much. Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay, perfect. You can never tell these days when you're, when you're alive or not, but I just wanted to say thank you for having me. Again, my name is Michael Parkinson and I'm the Director of Community Planning for NITIA's Real Estate Team. And I just wanted to thank everybody for joining this meeting tonight. I see that we already have over 100 folks on the line and that's just fantastic. I'm going to start with this and I'll end with it, which is this, you know, this is a great turnout, but it's not enough. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors, make sure that as many residents are participating in these meetings as possible because the more voices around the table, the better the project outcome will be every time. So thank you for those of you who showed up tonight. As you can see, there's quite the robust agenda, so I don't want to take too much time away from that. But just wanted to kind of give a few notes. Number one, as a representative of NITIA, I wanted to reiterate a little bit of the partnership that we have with Harlem River Preservation and that we're working together to make sure that comprehensive repairs, improvements, enhanced social services are going to be brought to Harlem River Houses and Harlem River Two as part of this PAC program. I know some folks on the line tonight may not have been able to join last month's meeting. So Harlem River Preservation will introduce themselves in just a moment. But I wanted to kind of stress the fact that this partnership that NITIA has with Harlem River Preservation does not stop there. And we really consider, you know, a third prong in this relationship as the residents being a critical partner in shaping this project. So I wanted to thank you all again for the participation. And tonight, you're going to be hearing a lot about design and ideas for the types of improvements and renovations that we brought to your buildings and your homes. And, you know, I want to just kind of reiterate that these are, what you're seeing tonight are proposals that have been really, really thought about in context and in conversation with tenant leaders at Harlem River One, or excuse me, Harlem River Houses. But the team is still in listen mode. So we're really interested in hearing your feedback tonight about what you're seeing and still want to hear about any ideas you all have in shaping this project moving forward. Nobody knows these buildings, nobody knows your apartment better than you do. So it's critical that your voice is part of this conversation. A little bit later, we're going to be talking about leasing. As you all know, the residents at Harlem River must sign new leases to convert to the PAC Section Eight program. These leases are really important because they will ensure that your apartment will remain affordable to your household under the PAC program. And they'll allow you to add authorized relatives and make sure that they have succession rights, you know, moving forward. In the coming weeks, we'll continue to discuss leases in detail and provide additional information on the process. And there will also be free legal resources available to any resident who has questions. I will also note that copies of the leases are available to any resident who wants to preview them or take a look. We'll be sending them to all households, but they're also posted online. And there's going to be plenty more information to be shared about leasing in meetings to come, but tonight is a really great opportunity to sort of start those conversations. And then just as the agenda points out, as Sam mentioned, we'll talk a little bit about hiring and NITIA's process and Harlem River Preservation's process for ensuring that Harlem River residents have the training opportunities and employment opportunities that are going to be brought about through the PAC project. So again, a lot to cover tonight. I'll leave it there. But wanted to reiterate how excited we are to have so many folks on the line and stress again that we want even more. So please, moving forward, continue to tell your friends and neighbors about these meetings. And with that, I'll turn it back to Sam and team. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much, Michael. So now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Alexis Sewell. Alexa, it would be great if you could introduce yourself and then let us know about this slide.
Great. Hi, everybody. Good to see you again. So my name is Alexis Sewell. For those of you who were on last time, I was here last time as well. I'm the President of Settlement Housing Fund. Settlement Housing Fund is a member of the Harlem River Preservation Team. We are a nonprofit. We are the lead developer on the team along with West Harlem Group Assistance. And so it's really nice to be here and we're so excited about, about getting to know you all. Sorry to not be meeting you in person. And I'm going to give just a very quick recap of last month's meeting. We met in the same format on December 3rd. And all of the information from that meeting, if you weren't able to join and are curious about it, can be found on our website and that is www.harlemriver.org. There's a lot of great information there. There is a tab there that says Tenant Meetings. And if you click on that, you'll find the full recording of last month's meeting and then this month's meeting will be posted, as Sam mentioned. And so we are Harlem River Preservation. Like I said, we're a nonprofit-led developer team. We were selected by NITIA to lead this PAC conversion at Harlem River. Just one thing for you to note, because we keep saying HRP. When we say HRP, we're talking about the full team, Harlem River Preservation. There are a number of us on the team that includes, you know, the construction team, the management team, and the development team, and our architects. So we're using that term broadly. And our hope is that we're going to start work in the summer of this, this year and to start doing work in your apartments. We, at this point, are ongoing with our inspections where we're trying to get a better sense of the physical conditions on the property. We really appreciate your cooperation with us on that. I know it can be very inconvenient and we appreciate it. It's really important. Just to recap what we told you last month, rents will be set at 30% of your household income. Some of you are currently paying a flat rent. And if your rent is going to go up from that flat rent, if the 30% of your household income is higher than that, we will be phasing in the increase over a five-year period and happy to talk to you individually about what that means for you. Just to reassure you, we are taking the safety of you all very seriously as well as the safety of the work people at the site. And we have instituted all sorts of COVID protocols. And so if you have any concerns about safety, of course, reach out to us, but we do want you to know and hear directly from us that we're taking that very, very seriously. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Alexa. So I just want to go through a little, just really quickly, the questions that we'll answer today. We like to do this towards the beginning of presentations because many of the questions that folks ask over the course of the Q and A or they have in their mind, we actually cover many of them during the presentation itself. So some of them for today are, first of all, what will the repairs and upgrades look like? What will actually occur in your apartments? Next, we'll take a look at a rendering, a picture of what your apartment might look like after the work is completed. And we'll have a member of our general contractor, L and M Builders, Mr. Ellie Himmelstein, talk to you a little bit about the upgrades and repairs that are forthcoming. We'll then turn to leasing. We'll talk through why tenants need to sign new leases and also answer the question of how the process will actually work. Then we'll talk about how tenants can apply for jobs at the work site. And I should actually have included jobs and training opportunities. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about what tenants should expect in the next few months. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Ellie. Ellie, it would be great if you could introduce yourself and tell us about the slide.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Ellie Himmelstein. I'm a senior project manager with L and M Builders. And we are going to be your general contractor here at Harlem River Houses. Very excited, looking forward to getting started. You've probably seen some of our consultants on site and a lot of you have had, already had a knock on your doors where we went in briefly into your apartments to see some of the conditions. So thank you for those of you who were able to let us in. It's really helped us figure out what exactly our scope needs to address. So hopefully you all have this in front of you. I'm not going to read every single line. We'll move in a second to the next slide, which is a little more representative. It has some photos. But just very quickly, in your apartment, the areas that we're going to be focusing on, the biggest amount of work is going to be in your kitchens and bathrooms. That work doesn't happen at the same time. We're still figuring out whether we're going to start with the kitchens or the bathrooms. But for example, if we start with your kitchens, we would do the kitchens throughout the, the project. And then we would come back at a later time to do the bathrooms. Typically, it's around a week of work in the kitchens and an additional week of work in, in the bathrooms. There's some preparation that tenants are going to have to do before that. Cleaning your, whatever things that you have in your kitchen cabinets, for example, or toiletries that you have in the bathroom. But we'll, we'll go over all of this well before we start the work. So it's a lot of work. If, if you have any questions about it and they're not answered today, or tonight, rather, don't worry. We're going to have more meetings. We're going to be onsite. And there's going to be ample opportunity, many, many times, that you're able to ask whatever questions you have. So in the kitchens, we're going to be painting, we're going to be putting down new flooring, new appliances. It's essentially a brand-new kitchen. Same thing in the bathroom. All new fixtures, new flooring, new lighting. And one of the, one of the great things about getting into the kitchens and bathrooms is these are the sources of leaks besides your, besides your roofs. If you have a neighbor above you who has a leaky faucet that's going down through your ceiling, you get peeling paint. We're going to address all that with our, with our plumbing work. And these issues will be resolved. There are holes behind the wall which lead to vermin, mice, bugs, whatever it might be. We're going to bring in exterminators. We're going to address that. We're going to plug up any holes and that will, that will take care of that. And then in general, in your overall apartments, we're going to paint the entire unit, which is going to brighten up the apartment. I know that a lot of the units have a little bit of a beige paint or whatever it might be. We're going to put, make sure that all your outlets are working. We're going to put in new flooring throughout. New windows throughout the whole property. This is actually something we're very excited about. We're going back to the historical windows at Harlem River One at the low-rise buildings, which is going to be a beautiful product, and window treatments, blinds. And in general, you know, the general complaints that we hear from tenants, too much heat. You know, my apartment is too hot or it's too cold. We're going to be modernizing the heating system at, throughout the entire property, which will address those heating concerns. We're going to take care of lead paint. This is, you know, obviously a huge concern for anyone who's on the property. We are going to either remove or encapsulate all of the lead paint. New apartment entry doors and that new, actually, new entrances to the buildings as well, which will come along with new intercom systems. So you can securely get in and out of the buildings. And those repairs, the leaks and general electrical issues that I mentioned earlier. So now let's get to the fun part, which is some photos. This is not, this is not fun. This is, this is, you know this. This is some of your apartments right now. So nothing, nothing exciting about this slide, but this is what we looked at, you know, when we went into various tenants' apartments. We could see what the conditions are right now. You know, what are the positives, you know, some of the great things, the double, the double sink. But, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the things that need work, older appliances, deteriorated cabinets, which, you know, are in rough shape, older flooring, you know, a lot of, you know, obvious need for new paint, safer, safer electrical outlets. And then if we can jump to the next slide, eight. Similar conditions, you know, just varying finishes throughout the, throughout the property. But, you know, the general, generally, in general, the same, the same idea. Oh, someone's writing. And then the next slide, this is the, this is the fun part. If we jump to nine.
Just give me one second, Ellie. I think I just made, I made that mark on here and I want to remove it.
As long as it's you.
Yeah, no, that's definitely me. Just give me one second. This actually happened.
So, so you can see in the background, again, older appliances, gas ranges, which, you know, we've heard from tenants, not all of them are in working order. Rotted-out cabinets, which are just not safe, especially if there are kids in the, in the apartments. Older flooring, some of which is coming up. A lot of, you know, a lot of layers and layers of paint, some of which are, you know, in good shape, a lot of which are not. So there's a lot of opportunity to get into the kitchens and bathrooms and do a lot of work. And then I guess the.
And I'm, whenever you're ready, Ellie, I can switch.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. The, the next one. This is the, this is the fun part. So if we were here with you in person, hopefully we'd be hearing uhs and ahs. Because the, the design team really came up with a, with an exciting, with an exciting product. So starting from the, from the floor up, what you're seeing is an LVT, a luxury vinyl tile floor, really nice product. You have stainless steel appliances, a range hood over the, over the stove, which most apartments do not have right now. Excuse me. Maintaining the double, the double sink, because we've heard from tenants that that's, that's, that's a popular item. Stone countertops. These are quartz countertops, basically one of the best products on the market right now, better than granite, stronger, it doesn't stain, and just a really beautiful, a beautiful, modern look. You have a four-inch backsplash and all-new cabinetry. Obviously, it's been painted. We have wall base and new LED lighting. I know that we're going to share photos or renderings of the bathroom at a, at a later date, but also just a really, really nice look. We've done on L and M Builders, we've done a lot of preservation work. I am really excited about the finished package that the design team and Settlement Houses put together for, for this property. So that's about it. Looking forward to answering any questions and hopefully getting started soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ellie. And as Ellie said, we will continue to answer questions during the Q and A. And as I said in the beginning, you can ask questions in the chat at any time. My colleague Judy Herpseman is answering questions live in the chat, some of them. For those that she's not able to answer during the meeting, we will take those at the end and discuss them as a group. So now we're going to move on to, we're going to move on to leasing. So I'm going to let my partner Lori Broderick from L and M take it away. Lori.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Lori Broderick, Director of HUD Compliance with CNC Apartment Management. As previously discussed, Harlem River will convert under NITIA's Permanent Affordability Commitment Together Initiative, which is also known as PAC. PAC aims to preserve and improve public housing by enabling NITIA and ourselves to convert this property to project-based voucher Section Eight while preserving the long-term affordability and maintaining resident rights. So as part of the PAC program, a new PAC lease between your household and us Harlem River will replace your current public housing lease. This lease will provide your rights and protections as a resident of Harlem River. Your new PAC lease is a part of the conversion to Section Eight. However, residents will continue to have their annual and interim income reviews and rent determinations with NITIA. Residents will continue to pay 30% of their adjusted household's income. And any households, as we mentioned earlier, who are currently paying flat rent, will have their rent fees in over a five-year period with NITIA. Next slide, please. So the process, residents will have access to legal services if you need assistance understanding your new lease. NITIA will host lease addition days so that all households can ensure that all their members are listed as part of their lease. Harlem River, we will be contacting households by mail, by notice, and by phone to schedule lease signings. You should expect to hear from us in the next month or so. Next slide. So as an overview, the PAC lease is required for each household as part of the conversion. There's no eligibility requirement. All households will be converted by NITIA. The type of assistance under the project-based voucher program is Section Eight, as I mentioned, and it's tied to the apartment within Harlem River. Residents will continue to have their rent calculated, 30% of their household's income with NITIA. Right sizing is required under the Section Eight Project-Based Voucher Program. However, we will only be right sizing within the development and only as appropriately sized units become available. Just want to ensure everyone that this is not an immediate process and residents will not be displaced. One great option for residents under the PACs program is Choice Mobility. After one year of the property converting, eligible residents will be able to request a portable Section Eight voucher with NITIA, which can be used to locate to any Section Eight unit within the United States.
Thanks so much, Lori. So now we're going to move on to, excuse me, hiring and training. I'm going to pass it over to Judy Guerena. Excuse me, Judy, I just pronounced your last name wrong. Judy Guerena. Judy, please take it away.
Thank you so much, Sam. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. As mentioned, my name is Judy Guerena. I will be the Compliance Manager handling hiring and training on this project. And so as an organization, we're committed to giving back to the communities in which we build in. And one of the ways we give back is offering training and career opportunities to the residents. We've committed 30, at least 30% of our total hires to be Section Three hires on this project. And we've also partnered with local 79th labor union to provide training as well as career placement opportunities to the residents. We will also be offering OSHA 40 classes to kickstart your career in the construction industry. We partner with a lot of community organizations to ensure that candidates are provided with support and can access training in soft skills as well as interview skills prior to meeting potential employers. And it's part of our culture to work with women and minority-owned businesses. And so we attend and host several outreach events to ensure that we are meeting new businesses in the construction and professional services sectors. Our CNC property manager has also committed to hiring Harlem River residents. And so they will be hiring at least 50% of their permanent positions as Section Three. They will work with tenants. They will work with tenant associations, well as community partners, to ensure that residents are placed in the best fitting positions and enjoy and ensure job retention. Next slide, please. Right. So on this project, uh, this project is subject to prevailing wage. So we will be offering full-time entry-level positions. That means a little to no experience is required to work on this project. And some of the trades that we expect to hire on will be electrical, painting, flooring, uh, plumbing, masonry, general labor. And in order to qualify for these positions, you will need to be an authorized NCHA resident. This means that you must be a NCHA, um, NCHA Harlem River resident and be listed on the current lease. You will also need an OSHA forty certification, proof of work authorization in the US, a valid government-issued ID, as well as an updated resume. Next slide, please. If you're interested in obtaining employment on this project, you can drop off your resume at our Dropbox. We've included the address on the slide as well as a picture, so you know exactly what it looks like. If you have access to email, you can also email it to info@harlemriver.org. Please ensure that your resume is updated. It includes your contact information as well as any construction-related experience or training that you currently have. And this includes OSHA or safety trainings. This is going to allow our team to, um, access your information as well as reach out to you, offering you free training if necessary. You can also reach out to Rees. Um, they can assist you with resume updating as well as an array of services that include training. And a lot of, like I said, a lot of, um, services that you can take advantage of now and get yourself ready to work on this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Judy. So now we are going to turn it over to Saeda from our partners at West Harlem Group Assistance. Saeda. Saeda, can you hear us?
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Um, as Sam said, my name is Saeda Walls and I am representing West Harlem Group Assistance, the co-developer along with Settlement Housing Fund on, um, this project. So what can residents expect in the next few months? Inspections will be, um, continuing along with, um, some repairs. Repairs will, uh, begin as well for, in preparation for the HQS inspections. Notices will be delivered, um, to everyone's apartment with the respect, repair schedule. And then we will work with you to find a convenient time. So, uh, then also you will be contacted to sign a new lease. NCHA will be scheduling, uh, lease addition days. This was discussed earlier in the presentation and provide you access to legal services. Also, we are currently in the process of finalizing a resident survey to determine what social service programs you would like. Then also, uh, we will continue to have these types of town hall meetings, resident town hall meetings every four to six weeks. The next meeting will be in early March. And so, and the expectation is that construction will begin in the summer, early summer. Next slide, please. So, um, just kind of recapping that, over the next couple of months throughout the winter, inspections and repairs will commence. Lease and lease information sessions will be held, the lease signings, the resident survey will be, um, distributed to everyone. Resident town hall meetings will occur every four to six weeks. Yeah. In the spring, inspections and repairs will continue as well as the lease signings. That is when, um, in the spring, the training and the hiring sessions will begin. That was just discussed. And we will continue to have the resident town hall meetings. And then, um, construction will begin early summer. Slide. So also, we would like everyone to stay in touch. I've been trying to monitor the chat and, um, the question, and I saw there were several questions about, um, communication. So we do ask, please sign up for the newsletter, visit our website. That's www.harlemriver.org. Again, that's www.harlemriver.org. And you can sign up for mailing lists and also announcements and all of the most current information will be posted on the, the website. Also, um, how to get in touch with us, please email info@harlemriver.org or you can leave a message at two one two eight six two thirteen ninety-nine, extension twenty-seven nineteen. Calls, a lot of message, people leave messages, have left messages about repairs and scheduling. And those, please know that the messages are passed on, uh, they, and my hope is that someone has been in touch with you. There have been, um, questions about, um, more specific about leases and things of that, things of that nature. And so with that, I try my best, but I also, I will be transparent. I am the one who is mon, who is monitoring the voicemail. And so I have spoken to some residents, not all about that, knowing that this, um, town hall meeting was coming up. And I wanted everyone to be on the same way, same page and receive the same information. But, um, please do not be discouraged. Your messages are received and when necessary, they are passed on to my colleagues, take time out and call folks back and try to quell any anxiety that people have. Sam.
Okay. Thank you so much, Saeda. So now we're gonna, um, start our Q and A. I mentioned previously how this will work, but I just want to say it one more time. First of all, um, we, one of my, one of my colleagues, Ayana Oliver Taylor, will introduce herself in a moment. Ayana will sort of be directing traffic when it comes to this Q and A session. Um, there are different folks with different expertise on this call. So we want to make sure that the right, uh, staff member is answering your question. So in order to ask your question, um, as I said previously, you can type your question into the Zoom chat. Ayana has been tracking the chat and will be, um, reading off a number of the questions that have not yet been answered, um, and, and answering those. You can also raise your hand in Zoom. Um, I will, uh, or actually really will be Ayana will call on you. I will then unmute your microphone and lower your hand, um, so that you can ask a question out loud. Um, and then Ayana will either answer the question or she will direct the, uh, the question to the right staff person on our team. If you're using a start smartphone and you want to raise your hand, you tap the screen and then tap participants and then tap raise your hand. If you're using a computer, you move your mouse on the Zoom screen, it reveals a toolbar, click participants and click raise hand. And then finally, if you're calling into the meeting, use a telephone, simply dial star nine to raise your hand. We will see it and we will answer your question. So with that, Ayana, please feel free to take it away.
Hi, thank you so much, Sam. Um, thanks, everyone, for the comprehensive, um, presentation today. We received a lot of questions related to, uh, the construction process and sequencing. And so I would like to, um, kick a question off to Ellie. Kimberly Allen asked, uh, the upgrade dimension addressed mostly cosmetic improvements. What is your plan to address infrastructure deficiencies in the absence of emerging, emerging technology?
In the absence of, uh, I'm not sure I under, part about in the absence of emerging technology. In general, aside the, other than the cosmetic work, before we, before we put up anything new, we're opening walls, we're looking at the existing pipes. And frequently we encounter rotted out waste lines, rotted out supply lines, and all of those are replaced. That's what's, um, that's what's been causing aside from, uh, an old roof or issues with the facade. That's where leaks are coming from, which are impacting your unit as well as your neighbors. So that's, uh, that's in your unit itself. As far as the, the condition of the property impacting, let's say utilities like internet or uh, electrical service or whatever it might be, there, there's a history of steam leaks that we've, that we've seen. That's can be one of the, one of the earlier things that we addressed, the steam distribution coming from the tower. And historic, uh, historic plumbing and roofing leaks will, will all be addressed. So once the building is, is tight, for lack of a, a better word, this will, this will address, the, this will give the ability, for example, for whether it's Time Warner or Verizon, who's at the building right now, for their systems to work properly. Hopefully that answers the emerging technologies question. If I didn't get that right, just add, if you could add some detail on the chat, we'll circle back.
And Ellie, do you, I'm sorry, this is Sam. Do you also just want to repeat, I, I think you said it previously, but do you want to just repeat? You know, just in general, at a higher level, what we're going to be doing for, um, heating and cooling, things like that, um, system-wide at the development?
Sure. Uh, so, uh, again, I, I just mentioned it very briefly, that the one thing we constantly hear from tenants is, not necessarily that they don't have heat, but that they have too much. So, uh, in the areas which are being, uh, serviced with steam heat, we'll be going back with a couple of measures. First, starting at the plant itself, we'll be modernizing the steam plant for the towers. Introducing better controls, newer boilers, uh, which will run more efficiently and provide the heat that the building needs. And every apartment will be putting in thermostatic radiator valves, which will allow tenants to have some control over the heat, literally essentially turning it off if you're, if you're too hot or if it gets cold to turning, uh, turn it higher. Replacing steam traps, orifice plates, basically addressing all the, all the outstanding issues with the, with the steam heat. We're also looking to introduce, uh, a more modern, um, heating and potentially cooling system at the low-rise buildings at Harlem River, but that, uh, that's still being developed.
Thanks, thanks so much, Ellie. Um, I'd like to ask another question related to, uh, tenant in place rehab and the overall process. Do you, um, can you elaborate on the, um, in-place renovation process and how you go through and sequence the work, um, throughout an apartment? And also going in and working with residents to relocate their belongings during the process?
Sure. Um, so we, we talked about this briefly in our, in our first meeting and we'll definitely, oh, my screen just went blank. And we'll definitely talk about it again in the, as, as we get closer to the renovations. To, uh, I would say two major points. A, uh, we work in cooperation with, with the tenants. So we're not knocking anybody's, any, anyone's door down. When we, when we come, it's with plenty of, uh, plenty of notice. It's been scheduled so people can accommodate work and school and taking care of loved ones or whatever, whatever it might be, you get plenty of notice. Uh, and then the other major issue, just to address quickly is, you know, obviously when you're working, uh, construction is inherently unsafe if not done properly. So everything that we do is monitored by the Department of Buildings. It's filed. We have dust and noise mitigation plans. The development team brought on great consultants who have given us detailed drawings and specifications. We have environmental consultants who come in and test the unit to make sure that everything we're doing is done safely. Uh, and I would just stress, this is not the first time that we're doing this. Every property is different and presents its own challenges, but we have done thousands of units. I've been doing, I've been working in construction for a long time on the preservation side, which is basically this type of project. I've been working on it for the last ten or so years. So we've, we've seen a lot. We, we certainly haven't seen it all. There are always new challenges, but we, we've addressed, uh, and dealt with most of the things that come up. So, um, when, when it comes into, uh, when, and I think we'll go into more detail as we get closer and we'll, we'll distribute paperwork on this, the tenants can get the step-by-step. But in the weeks prior and the day prior to us starting work, let's say, in your kitchen, we would ask that the tenants take out everything from the cabinets because those cabinets will be removed. If you have a kitchen table or anything like that, uh, for the seniors or for anyone who has, uh, a little bit of trouble doing this, we will work with you. We'll figure out how to clean out your kitchen. Day one, when we come, is typically demo. Uh, and I, I think, um, just on a side note, Judy had pointed out in, in the chat, one of the ways that.
Are you on this?
One of the ways.
You're not muted.
Now she is. Uh, one of the ways that, and guys, Ayana, uh, Judy, Sam, cut me off if I'm talking. I don't want to take up too much time. Um, but day one, you're, basically we're able to do the work that we're doing because we're not in the entire apartment at once. So we focus in a kitchen. We put up plastic sheeting, we protect the floors. There's extreme dust control. We vent the, the apartments when we're, when we're in them. We start off with demo in day one. Uh, in the following days, we lay the, the new floor in the kitchen. You will always have, whether we're working in the bathroom or the kitchen, you'll always have a working toilet, you'll always have a working sink. You'll always have a, a working range. What else can I tell you? Uh, the, overall, the process takes roughly seven days. We try and do it faster, but at most seven days in the, in the kitchen and additional seven days in the, in the bathroom. And that's, that's essentially it. I, I think as, you know, as we get closer to the process, we will literally give you a step-by-step, we'll go over it, uh, you know, either in person or in a Zoom meeting, but we'll also give you in writing, step-by-step, what we will be doing in your apartment and, and how we do it.
Thanks so much, Ellie. And I'd also like to ask, um, a joint question between you and CNC related to security. Do you mind first addressing, um, what the rehab capital program will include in terms of security upgrades? And then someone from, um, one of our colleagues from CNC can talk about on the long-term, um, operations and maintenance side.
Sure. Uh, our, our scope is basically informed by CNC who has, you know, former NYPD officers on, on staff who, um, know the area, know the needs of the property. And, and basically they advise what we, what we do, which is essentially, um, we have cameras at the building exterior, which are recorded and monitored by security staff. We have cameras inside the stairwells, uh, at the, at the roof bulkheads. We make sure that all the doors are secured. We'll be replacing the entry doors, putting in new lock systems, handing out key fobs to tenants, which are, are, are basically, you can't duplicate a key fob. So, you know, that controls people passing around keys to, to friends or whatever it might be. So that the, the access to the building is limited to the tenants and their guests. And we put in a new intercom system, uh, which will allow tenants to securely, um, allow people into, into the building. So essentially you're looking at cameras, new intercom system, uh, access control and then improved lighting throughout the site. So it's not lit up like Yankee Stadium, but it's lit up in a tasteful, appropriate way to make sure that, um, the property is a, is a safe environment.
And Ellie, this is Sam, before we pass it along to CNC to provide a bit more, we will be covering in much more detail, improvements to the site at our next meeting. So we will be talking more about lighting. We will be talking more about cameras and other landscape improvements, um, at the next meeting. So that's just a little primer. Um, and you know, we of course expect more questions on this and we'll do our best to answer them as they come. Um, and now CNC, Doreen, do you, would you want to answer just, uh, you know, the question about security with regard to ongoing security and, you know, how that works? Do we have Doreen on?
You do now, if I unmute. Hi, everyone. Security is at the top of our list. As we walk around and we get the opportunity to meet everyone that we come across, many of you have mentioned your concerns about security. We guarantee that we have an A-team that will address this. In addition to the different and various measures that we're going to use to try to make your environment as safe as we possibly can. We're focusing, as Sam said, on your lighting, your front doors, your locking systems, your intercom systems. As we all know, security starts first with us. So we also are going to need your help and cooperation. You see something, say something. So we will have a lot more to talk. So, we will have a lot more to talk to you about in the future about the systems we're still reviewing and talking to the residents about. And we'll let you know what our final plans and decisions are very shortly.
Thanks so much, Doreen. We received another question from Michelle Franklin, asking who will run the management office here within the new development? Will they still be able to work with the current housing assistant and managers who are currently in the management office?
CNC Management Company will be the onsite company. We are going through a hiring process. You may see some new faces. You will definitely see some new faces, and you may see some old faces. Current employees will have the opportunity to submit resumes to us if they expressed an interest. Those decisions have not all been made yet, but we look forward to entertaining anyone's resume who wishes to put it forward.
Thank you so much. We just got a follow-up question related to cameras within the building. And I can just briefly answer this and say, yes, there are going to be cameras in the buildings, on the floors, and within the stairwells. So, we're definitely going to be integrating a comprehensive security program here. Another question that came up is related to painting. This has come up a couple of times. Related to individual apartments, we will speak to everyone on a case-by-case basis so that we don't address individual household-specific issues today. I'd like to open it up to do a live Q&amp;A at this point? Does that make sense, Sam?
Sure. Yeah. And just a reminder about when you'd like to take questions from the interpretation line, but I will follow your lead.
Oh, that's a good reminder. Can we take questions from the Spanish line?
Sure. I see there's three hands raised on the Spanish line, so we'll ask the interpreters to...
And just before we, just quickly before we do that, for those of you that are English speakers, you're a period of silence as the question is asked on the Spanish line. Then it's translated over to this line, and then the answer is interpreted. So, just bear with us as we go through a, just a quick moment of no one on the mic.
He's just explaining how they unmute themselves. Okay, the question is just being asked now. Thank you.
Yes, hello. I have the question here. Is Mr. Feliz Mora, he wants to know if the rents will be 30% of their income? And what is the new contract? I mean, if we need to sign a new lease, what is new in this new lease that it's not in the old lease?
Thanks so much. I'd like to kick this off to my colleague Lori from CNC, and then maybe a follow-up from Robert Tesrero at NICA.
Hi. So, the rent will continue to be 30% of the household's income. Residents will continue to certify their income, whether it's annually or mid-year with an interim with NICA. Now, the new lease is going to be signed between the resident and us, because we are the management. However, the language in there does state that residents will be paying 30% of their income determined by NICA.
Hi, Lori. This is Robert Tesrero from NICA Section 8. I just want to add that for folks who are paying a flat rent, which is a term used in public housing, those folks, as was stated before, will be phased in over a five-year period. So, no one has to worry about going from flat rent to 30% right away. That'll be a gradual, you know, phase in. And again, the lease that you're going to be signing with CNC provides all the necessary protections and similar protections that you had as a public housing resident.
Thanks, Robert. Are there any other questions from the Spanish line?
Yes, I have another question. Hold on. Yes, I mean, the other question is related to laundry machine. I want to know if I can keep my laundry machine, or you're going to help us with laundry, or how laundry machines are going to be working?
Is that question specifically related to a washing machine or a dryer?
Okay, okay. Here's the question. I have a washing machine, and I want to know if I can keep my washing machine, because I have one inside my apartment.
Okay, thank you. So, I'd like to kick this off to my colleague Mike, and then back to either Sam or Ellie to discuss...
Hi, this is Mike Prush. So, I think I'd also... So, I'd also like the support of Robert from NICA on this as well. It's our understanding that if there is the washing machine that can remain, dryers are a completely different issue, and that is tied to, you know, the existing leases and the rules and regulations of the building at this moment. The washing machines, you know, we can, we'll have to kind of review, make sure that it's plumbed in correctly, and that we're not causing any other risks or other issues at the building. But at this point, I just want to defer back to NICA on what those existing rules and regulations are surrounding washers and dryers particularly.
Hey, Mike. This is Robert again from NICA Section 8. So, you're absolutely correct. Washing machines are acceptable, as reported to NICA, but dryers are not. Again, I want to refer to the existing public housing lease that prohibits the use of dryers. So, just keep in mind that when HPD comes out to do the Section 8 HQS inspections, if there's a dryer, the apartment will fail inspection. So, please keep that in mind. But you're absolutely correct. Washing machines are acceptable, but not the dryers.
Thank you, Rob. And again, for everyone's safety, especially the units of, that are below anyone who has a washer, we will certainly, you know, take a look at all the plumbing and the drain work and just make sure that the risk of potential leaks or flooding conditions into an apartment below concerning the washers, that that is a major priority for us as well.
We also, this is Doreen. We also want to let everyone on the call know that we are reviewing the possibilities of putting laundromats into the development. So, more on that to come, and we're working through the details, and hopefully, we'll be able to restore that amenity for you.
Thanks so much, Doreen. I'd like to follow up with Robert. There was a question related to if a tenant has a four-bedroom apartment. Will the Section 8 voucher cover four bedrooms?
Yeah, sure. I mean, basically, depending upon the family size. If your family size requires a four-bedroom, that is something that Section 8 will cover in terms of the subsidy. Anybody who is not in the right size apartment will have the right size at some point after the closing. But certainly, if there are four bedrooms at Harlem River, and you require that four-bedroom, we can approve that for a rightsizing transfer.
Thanks so much. And families, if they are right-sized, they will not be obligated to move to a new development, correct?
That's correct. The rightsizing is going to be at the development, so no one has to leave. Rightsizing will take a long time, because there are not a lot of units available for the rightsizing. So, as units become vacant and as units become renovated, that rightsizing will start after conversion.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the Haitian Creole line?
No, we don't have any questions on the Haitian Creole line.
Thank you. What about the Mandarin line?
Nope, no questions in the Mandarin line.
Okay, great. So, it looks like we've got a couple of hands raised, so we can go to the live chat. Sean, I'd like to ask you to unmute. Oh, you just dropped your hand. Kim Letley, can you please unmute?
Sorry, Ayana. That was Sean. Sean, can you raise your hand again? It was actually me that I lowered your hand by accident. Can you raise it one more time? And I will see if we can get you back up there.
Oh, there he goes.
Hold on a second.
My question is this. On the last town hall that we had, we was told that the leases will be signed in June. Now, we're being told it's going to be signed in February. So, if we start the lease process in February, one, when is the lease going to take effect? And who is going to be our management company?
Robert, do you want to address that, and then Lori can come in after?
Yeah, sure. So, again, you know, basically, the lease signing process does start early on, anticipated the closing date. But keep in mind that even though you're executing a lease with the new management company, it will not go into effect until the closing actually occurs. So, at this point in time, even though you're signing a lease, NICA is still the managing agent and will be assisting you with all your daily operations at the development. So, again, signing a lease now does not mean that NICA is going away. We're not. But that lease will not become effective until after the closing, which will be a date to be determined.
Yeah. Hi, this is Michael from NICA. I was just hoping I could add a word to. You know, one of the reasons that we're starting the lease conversation even earlier than anticipated is really around the idea that we want to give residents enough time to adequately access resources and get the information that they need. So, even, I appreciate the question, because hearing, you know, in one conversation that that's not going to happen until June, and now all of a sudden, we're starting, you know, saying February and even starting the conversation tonight, is really in service of residents getting the information they need. Just to echo Robert, the lease will not take effect until the closing date, which will, you know, has no bearing on when we're starting these conversations. And I also just wanted to reiterate the legal resources that will be available. There will be a hotline, so that any resident who wants to review the lease or talk through it with, you know, a legal representative, a non-NICA, a third-party legal representative, will have that opportunity. And will be able to ask questions about the document. They can view the document, you know, as of today. It's on our website, like I mentioned earlier, and you will be receiving hard copies of it. So, just wanted to clear up why those conversations are starting earlier in the process than was previously indicated. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And Lori, do you want to speak just briefly and reiterate the timeline that you indicated earlier?
Yeah. So, we mentioned February. It's going to be closer to the end of the month. February is next week, so it will be towards the end of the month. And again, you know, it takes some time. It's going to be scheduling and reaching out to households. But, you know, like Michael said and Robert, we really want to just bring it to your attention. NICA will continue to be your management until the closing. And again, you can get a copy of it. It's available now online, as mentioned earlier. But then, you know, when we do start contacting you, you can review it. And if you want to, you know, have it reviewed, that's perfectly fine as well. So, it would be towards the end of February that we will be reaching out to households.
And even that, Lori, sorry to jump in, but even that's just the start. Like you were saying, it's going to be an ongoing process. So, targeting the end of next month to start the process, and then all the way through closing, folks will have the opportunity to be actually signing leases.
Exactly. Thank you, Michael.
I want to say one other thing, just about timing. You hear us use what seems to be a very vague timeframe for the closing. We keep saying, oh, the summer, midsummer. The reason we're not giving an exact date is because the date actually changes depending on how much progress we're making. These projects are, as you know, I mean, you all are residents. These projects are big, you know, they're big rehab, big. There's just a lot of moving pieces, so things, you project a schedule. But, you know, sometimes we do things faster than expected. Sometimes we do things slower than expected. So, as of now, we are projecting to close or start construction in the middle of the summer. And as we continue to make progress, if there are any updates to that schedule, whether we're ahead of schedule or we're slower and we need to push the date, we will communicate that to you.
Thanks, Sam. And related to construction, I would like to reengage my colleague Ellie and ask that he go over the VRF scope or the mechanical scope a little bit more in detail. And there are some questions related to central air or air conditioners at Harlem River 1 and 2.
Sure. So, starting off with Harlem River 2, which is the tower, the steam plant is going to, you'll still have steam heating. And then, if a tenant had an air conditioner, a window air conditioner, you'll still be able to maintain that air conditioner. What we're doing at the tower, which we are not doing at Harlem River 2, because it's landmarked, is we'll be wrapping the building in what's called exterior, an exterior insulating finishing system, EFS, which allows us to give the building an entirely new look. But perhaps more importantly, at least from a construction perspective and energy conservation, it insulates the building. So, after this process is complete, and once we install new windows, you have a completely new thermal envelope around your building, which creates a more comfortable environment. In terms of the heat that you're getting, I'd mentioned a little earlier, you'll have new controls at the steam radiators, which will allow you to modulate that heat, making it hotter or cooler. But the air conditioning will still be window air conditioners. At Harlem River 1, the low-rise buildings, and this is something that we're, I think, NICA and the development team were equally excited about. Right now, the Harlem River 1 is getting their heat from the tower. And you've walked from the tower to the buildings. You can imagine how inefficient that is, right? To have underground steam piping going to every single one of these buildings. So, what we're going to introduce at every one of the units of Harlem River 1, that's roughly 577 units, give or take, one or two unit, you're going to have what's called a variable refrigerant line, cooling and heating system. What this will amount to basically is in every unit, in every room, you'll have a, what looks, I'm sorry, at a future meeting, we'll have a cut sheet, a photo of one of them, so everyone can take a look at exactly what I'm talking about. But if you can picture basically an air conditioner inside your apartment, something a little wider than that, but a thinner profile, and that will be in every single room, and that will provide heat and cooling. Not to bore everyone to tears with the refrigerant process, but if you've ever walked by an air conditioner outside during the summer, you know that it blows out hot air as it's blowing cool air inside the apartment. Basically, what a heat pump does is it reverses that process during the winter, so you can have hot air blowing into your apartment when it's cold out and cold air blowing into your unit when it's hot out. So, we'll be essentially introducing cooling... So we'll be essentially introducing cooling to every one of the units at Harlem River 1. And one last clarification, in that process, that means we'll also be taking Harlem River 1 off of the steam heat. So we'll be able to remove all those steam radiators.
Thank you, Ellie. I'd like to ask Kim Letley to unmute to ask her question live.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My question is, due to the pandemic right now, I am confined to my home where I work. So I'm just wondering, will there be any accommodations for those who have to work at home because of the current pandemic?
So Sam, did you want to respond to that one?
We're happy to respond to this one. Thank you for the question. It's a really good one. And we're doing a lot of thinking about this. So the plan right now is to provide hospitality suites during the day for residents that need one as we do work in your unit. Hospitality suites will be in the development itself. So essentially, we'll be taking vacant units that are in the development and converting them into spaces that can be occupied. There will be wifi, television, couches, chairs, a table, et cetera, a bathroom, working, you know, toiletries, et cetera. They'll be cleaned after every single use and this will be to accommodate folks who don't want to or can't stay in their, in their unit while work is occurring. Conversations about hospitality suites are still ongoing. We know that it's a concern for residents and, you know, these sorts of rehabs come with this challenge of, you know, we don't, we're not relocating, we're not asking residents to sort of leave their apartments and move elsewhere over the course of the work. But we are really focused on this. If there's a specific concern that you have, we'd love to hear from you. Kim, if you want to send us an email at info@harlemriver.org or give us a phone call, that'd be great because we really, we're really very aware of this and we want to make sure that we are accommodating you.
Thanks, Sam. And do you mind just clarifying who hospitality suites will be available for?
Sure. And let me know if I'm understanding that question correctly, Ayana, based on my response. But anytime someone comes into your unit, one of our workers comes into your unit and you or your family don't want to be there during, while the work is occurring, you can get a hospitality suite. We'll be providing more information over the coming months about how to actually make that request. But these units are for folks that don't want to be in their unit while work is occurring.
Thanks so much, Sam. I'd like to ask Marciella to unmute so that she can ask her question live.
Give me one second. I think I have to actually do it manually and I'm looking for Marciella's hand. Just give me one second here. I'm not actually seeing that one. I think you're also able to, oh, I see it. Never mind. I got it. Okay, Marciella, you should be able to unmute now. Marciella, can you hear us? I'm not sure if you can hear us, but if, to unmute, if you, if you're on a computer, if you move your mouse and click the unmute button on the lower left, that's one way to do it. If you're on a phone, if you tap the screen, you should also be able to do it.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. I think we can hear you now.
Yeah, I was going to ask the question through the chat, but yeah. When are these repairs are going to be done? Because, you know, the doors keep being broken and then there's leaks on the bathrooms. So when exactly are they going to repair? Like, NICA is going to repair, make all these repairs?
So I think that's a two-part question. One is related to the existing issues that are currently within your unit and those should continue to be directed to NICA. But Sam, do you mind, can you just reaffirm the schedule for construction commencement?
It's a great question and, you know, it's, it's hard to hear these questions because, you know, we talk, we have these meetings and we talk about all these great things that are coming. And then we say, oh, well, go ahead and wait, right? We, you know, all this great stuff, not until the summer. So unfortunately, what I would say is, as of now, ongoing maintenance issues should be, you should continue to them to NICA. NICA remains the property manager until we close on this deal. So those, those issues are, really are in NICA's court. What I will say is that some of the issues will maybe, I don't want to get too much into detail, but some of the issues that you're referring to, leaks and such, may be addressed when we do what's called the HQS repairs. HPD basically needs to certify that your apartment is safe to live in. And in order to make that certification, they have to meet certain standards. So we will be doing repairs in some apartments so that we can get through the HPD inspection and that will start to occur likely next month, those repairs. I can't guarantee that it's going to be in your apartment. I wish I could. So what I would say is, don't stop placing, placing maintenance requests and speaking to the property management office, Maria Sanchez over at the office at NICA, to get these issues taken care of. Our full rehab begins in the summer after we close. But, and that's the, that's the timeline for now.
Thanks, Marciella and Sam. Marciella, I just wanted to make sure that that addressed your question.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
We had a question in the chat that I would like to direct to Robert Tesorera from NICA. April asked, will those who prefer to stay in a NICA development be given the opportunity to transfer to a NICA development that is not converting?
So right now, the, so right now, that's a great question, by the way. So based on my experience on the past about seven PAC deals I've been through, we're at the point right now where we're cutting off transfers in or out of Harlem River. So unless it's an emergency type of transfer, you will have to convert in place. But again, keep in mind, as was said before, one year after conversion, if you're still interested in leaving Harlem River, you can request a transfer with a tenant-based Section 8 voucher. But if you're really adamant about trying to transfer, speak to your management tomorrow to see if it's, if the window's still open for transfers. I think it's not, but it doesn't hurt to try if you're really interested.
Thank you, Robert. Also, do you mind just speaking briefly about the earned income disallowance?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
Do you mind speaking briefly around the, about the earned income disallowance?
Sure. So I do, I do know that in public housing, the earned income disallowance basically has a different definition than in Section 8. For Section 8, it's for disabled households going to employment. But if you're a public housing resident and at the time we convert over to Section 8, if you're part of the earned income disallowance, we will grandfather you in and obviously your rent will stay the same. So if you have that, we'll honor it. If you don't, then on the Section 8 side, we can apply for that.
Thank you. And another follow-up related to Section 8, Robert. What happens if a household doesn't qualify after a year?
Well, I mean, again, when we convert to Section 8, everyone qualifies, right? So there is no application, there is no screening. So basically, you're going to be paying 30% just like you've been paying with public housing, except for the flat rents, which again, we have a five-year phase in. So you might have heard that the Section 8 waiting list is closed and, you know, the regular Section 8 waiting list, you have to be income-eligible. But here in PAC, you're automatically eligible and again, you pay 30%. So you don't have to worry about that.
Thank you. And then do you mind just also speaking briefly about lease addition days?
Yeah, sure. I mean, lease addition days came about fairly recently, partnering with legal aid, where residents can come forward and report any additional occupants that are residing in the apartment that have, that were not reported before. But you don't have to wait for lease addition day. That can be basically any day. So by all means, if you have a house member that you have not reported, please do so right away so that we can get that person on the lease approved and that when we convert to Section 8, we already have the records up to date. So, but you'll be hearing about lease addition days in the near future, but don't wait for that. Please come in, report with ever, you know, household members or even appliances or pets that you may have that need to be registered.
Yeah. And hey, this is, this is Michael again from NICA. I just wanted to add to that. Really moving forward, we're actually going to be starting a new model and getting a little bit away from this idea of lease addition day because it really pulls into focus, you know, one of many questions that residents have around lease signings. And what we found is that, in fact, when we've had lease addition days in the past, lease additions are just one of many other things people want to talk about. So we want to, we want to address a broader range of questions and information sharing when we talk about leases. So moving forward, what we'll do is we're partnering, as I think we've mentioned, with legal nonprofits to provide attorneys and third parties to answer questions that residents have. And we'll do that right now via hotline because, of course, getting a bunch of folks together in any room due to the public health concern is just not, you know, not something that we're able to do. But we also find that the hotline structure is, you know, really responsive and flexible to residents' needs as well. So if you have somebody you want to add to your lease, you know, something you would have otherwise done at what we used to call these lease addition days, you'll have that opportunity to schedule an appointment and make those adjustments through this hotline function. But also, this will be available for a whole range of other questions you might have because we know that, that, you know, residents aren't only concerned about how are they going to add somebody to their lease, they're curious about different riders or different, you know, clauses in the lease or why they have to sign a new lease. And, you know, we hope to dispel a lot of the misinformation and share a lot of the facts as we roll out more information around leases. But this lease hotline will be the primary function or primary source for any resident who's interested in adding household members to their lease moving forward. So we'll explain more about that. We'll have more information as we go.
Thanks so much, Michael. I'd like to take it over to the translation lines. Are there any questions from the Spanish line?
We had one more question on the Spanish line, so I'm going to get the doctors.
And then once we take questions from the Spanish line, we can go to the Haitian Creole and Mandarin lines.
There are no questions on the Mandarin line.
So here's the question. It's about resizing. There are three adults living in a one-bedroom apartment. What can I do?
Thank you. I don't, Michael or Robert, do you want to be my question?
Sure. I'd invite Robert to answer that one.
Yeah, sure, Michael. Yeah, so basically, under the Section 8 occupancy standards, a three-person family is entitled to a two-bedroom apartment. So you would be, that family would be on the rightsizing list after conversion to occupy a two-bedroom apartment when one becomes available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, do you mind, can you just walk everyone through the sort of Section 8 process and conversion from Section 8, from Section 9 to Section 8 and what that means to residents?
Sure. I mean, again, I just want to emphasize here that, you know, on conversion date, you're really not going to see any difference in terms of going from public housing to Section 8. And what I mean by that is that your share of the rent will continue to be the same. Okay, so what's going to happen is, once we convert, you'll become a Section 8 tenant, will longer be public housing, but at the same time, you'll share the same benefits, the same protections. And the Section 8 leased housing department will basically take over your recertifications, any type of transfer requests. So in a sense, NICA is not going away, even though we are doing this PAC conversion. But anything that we can assist you with in leased housing, Section 8, we can do so either through the customer contact center or either on our portal. Leased housing has a lot of good information on the Section 8 website. You could actually access it now. But again, you're going to see that this is a win-win situation for you because not only do you get to stay in the current apartment, it gets renovated and you have options. I mean, after one year, and I've seen this with the other PAC closings, tenants have the option to request a tenant-based voucher to transfer if they wish to do so. So a lot of flexibility, but you won't see a dramatic change in going from public housing to Section 8. The only thing you'll see is a brand-new apartment.
Thanks, Robert. To just clarify, the conversion from Section 9 to Section 8 is just more of a funding stream change and it doesn't, it's not a physical change to the resident, correct?
That's correct.
Aside from the improvements that are able to be generated?
Right. So behind the scenes, it's a program change in terms of funding streams. And, I mean, over the years, the Section 8 program, which has been around since 1976, has always been well-funded. It's actually better funded than public housing in terms of capital. So basically, we get the benefit of federal dollars from the Section 8 program and plus our development partners come in with the financing for capital improvements. So that's, that's basically what you're getting from these PAC deals.
Great. Thank you so much, Robert. Are there any other questions from the Spanish line or the Mandarin and Haitian Creole line?
There's no questions on the Haitian Creole line.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to...
A question. I'm taking a question from the Spanish.
They're just taking another question from the Spanish line.
Yes, I have a question. This is the same situation where three adults living in a one-bedroom apartment. I already got my transfer, but I don't want to move to the place where they are transferring them. Can I stay here and apply for resizing?
Thank you. Robert, do you mind?
Yeah, so if I understand the question correctly, a public housing resident who's in a small apartment got approval to transfer. Is that, is that the understanding?
No, she already got a transfer, but she doesn't want to move from that development. She wants to stay in that development, but she wants to be resized to a two-bedroom because there are only, there are three persons living in one-bedroom apartments. So she wants to, it's after the transition, she can move, she can apply for a bigger apartment.
Right. I can only speak to after conversion when Section 8 takes over, which is my department. So again, anything prior to conversion will be property management, NICA. So that could be discussed with property management. But after conversion, if... But after conversion, if she did not move, or the person did not move, and they're three people in a one-bedroom, they qualify for two, and they'll be rightsized at the appropriate time.
And at the same development?
Yes, so again, all rightsizing on the PAC is the same development. We're not asking anybody to leave.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. And I'd like to remind folks, if you have specific questions related to your... You can definitely reach out to our team, and we will help facilitate the questions with NYCHA. The email address would be Harlem River... Or Sam, actually, do you mind giving out the contact information?
Sure, yeah. If you have a question about your unit in particular, we really do want to hear from you. So please email us at info@harlemriver.org. That's info@harlemriver.org. Also, call our phone number. I'm going to ask Saidah, I don't know the number off the top of my head. Saidah, can you say the number out loud?
212-862-1399, extension 2719. Should I repeat it?
Yes, please.
212-862-1399, extension 2719.
Great. And please, everyone, know that this information is also on our website, www.harlemriver.org. All of our contact information is there. And you will also, I'm seeing a question in the chat about how to access the recording. If you're not able to stay for the remainder of this Q and A, or you just want to, you know, look back at the information we've already given, our website will have a recording of this meeting, a video recording, by the end of the week next week.
Thanks, Sam. So I'd like to go back to some live questions. The phone number ending in 3649, do you mind unmuting?
We should be able to...
Yes, hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear me.
Yes, my name is Robin Reed. I'm listening to everything you're saying they're going to do. But I go to the bathroom with a beach umbrella over my head. That's how much water be dripping from my overhead. And this has been years. Now, I'm sickly. I suffer from lupus. And I don't know what's going on. You can't go downstairs to your mailbox because people's all down in the lobby doing their business. You can't go on the stairway because they doing their business too. There. One day, I went downstairs, and I'm not going to use the stairway anymore, but there was a lady, there were four children, and they were asleep. Something has to be done. Why's security haven't came over there yet? Why the cops is not being called? Something has to be done. I've been in Harlem River houses since 1955. I'm just annoyed.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reed. I really appreciate the feedback. I'd like my colleague, Doreen from CNC, to discuss how we'll sort of integrate the transition process here and how, you know, we'll notice immediate changes and longer-term changes as well in sort of the environment.
Okay.
The first thing I want to tell you is that we hear you. We not only hear you, but we experience what you're seeing as we go around your development. When we do, or when we have the ability to take over, we will pay extreme attention to your security aspects. We've spoken to you about the doors that we will do. We also have our own security team. They are retired, most of them, retired police officers. They are experienced in dealing with this type of element. When we see something, the most important thing is, we have to say something. I assure you that when you come across these types of incidents, when CNC management is in place, we will be very, very reactive and proactive in handling these types of events.
Thanks so much, Doreen. There's a question on the Spanish line, according to the chat.
I'm sorry, before we go into that question, I know that the question that just came up, there was also a question about maintenance. It sounded like a pretty substantial leak. But I would say is two things. First, that's really horrible to hear. I'm sorry that you're dealing with that. We do encourage you to continue to reach out to property management, NYCHA Property Management, to address these issues. We will be taking over property management responsibility, including handling maintenance requests and, you know, handling ongoing maintenance when we close on the development in the summer. For now, please do reach out to property management. And it's, you know, a horrible situation, and, you know, we're looking forward to you getting that resolved. I mean, I think you heard a lot from Ellie about the work we're planning to do to comprehensively address the persistent leaks that are going on. So, you know, the plan is to not make this like a patch job, right? We don't want to just patch it up and then it happens again. We're doing a very extensive rehabilitation once we begin in the summer to make sure that these issues aren't happening. Also, we'll be handling ongoing maintenance. But this will certainly be part of the scope of repairs that we're planning.
Yeah, and hey, Sam, this is Michael again. I'm not seeing that in the chat. If I could just have somebody also pass that along to me, I'll make sure that we can look into that on NYCHA's end. You know, I want to reiterate Sam's point. Please do reach out to property management, but we can also flag on our end, of course.
Always reach out to property management.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was this a live question? What's your address, ma'am?
Well, they addressed the unit. I'm telling them I go to the bathroom with an umbrella over my head. But I always address them, and they always come and take pictures of the nonsense and the walls, the seal was falling and holes all in the wall, watered up with wood. It's just unacceptable to me. We have mice running in the walls, and that's what I'd be looking for because I don't want them to come in my apartment.
Yeah, understood. And that's a terrible situation. You know, I hate to use an example like that to, you know, talk about the program. But when we hear things like that, it is so illuminating for us. And it underscores how important it is to get really critical, systems-wide and infrastructural improvements to your development. And that's what PAC will do. But I know in the meantime, you're still dealing with things. So I just want to make sure that I have the right information that I can pass along on my end. So if somebody on the team that had that, if you can just send it our way, that would be great.
So I think it's being asked, ma'am, do you want to reach out to... I can put our email address in the chat. I want to be able to pass along the address. I don't want to, I mean, you shouldn't have to share your personal information in this. So if you want to pass along the address, we can bring that directly to Michael, who just talked. Are you able to send us an email?
Excuse me?
Are you able to send us an email with your address so that we can pass along this issue?
Yes. I'm in 2850 Frederick Douglass Boulevard. I'm in Harlem River 2.
Okay.
Apartment 4G, as in girl.
Okay, Michael, do you have that? I was just saying, Mike...
Can you repeat that one more time, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Michael, she said 2850. It's the Tower Harlem River 2, apartment 4G, as in girl.
Great, thank you. Thank you. We'll flag that, and I'm so sorry you're dealing with that, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thanks. Thanks so much. And I would actually like to ask Ellie to take a moment to talk a little bit more about the investigations that we're going to be doing and how were these investigations during the pre-development period are really going to be used to identify and address the root causes of some of these systemic issues?
Sure. I mean, first of all, 1950, I look forward to meeting you because we're looking forward to restoring the property, especially Harlem River 1, to its landmarked glory. And you can be an excellent source of information. So I look forward to introducing myself. And I also wanted to quickly introduce someone else who's on the call. Anthony Zapata, a young man who recently joined our team. He's already been on the property for a couple of months, helping the consultants around the properties so that we can learn more about it. So I'm glad Anthony was able to join the call as well. Just very quickly, it's interesting to hear that you live on the fourth floor. So obviously, your leak isn't coming from the roof, which we will be replacing. So it's either coming from, you know, one of the plumbing lines or steam-related leak. It could be something as simple as the toilet above you. The seal is, the wax seal is off. Or it's any number of possibilities. But we will figure it out and address it. That is, it's an easy thing to fix. I understand, I'm sure, why it hasn't been fixed. There aren't the resources. But when we come in, this is a great thing that we can do as soon as we start working in the apartments. Forget about, you know, the aesthetics and the brand-new appliances, et cetera. Taking care of leaks is so important to your quality of living. And that's, it's not rocket science. It's an easy thing for us to address.
Thanks, Natalie. There is a question on the Spanish line.
Yes, here's a question. I want to know if I keep paying my rent to NYCHA as I've been doing.
So I guess Lori, I'm not sure if there's a follow-up to that question.
But yes, they will continue to pay their rent now. Once closing happens, we will be sending out notices with where to pay the rent. So for now, they should continue paying their rent the way they do. Once we get closer to the closing, they'll be receiving notices from CNC with the different ways that residents can pay their rent.
Okay, thank you. And the other question is, can I have two... Can I keep the two air conditioning units that I have? One in the bathroom and one in the living room?
I'd like to ask my colleagues, Mike or Doreen, to address that.
Absolutely. So, you know, if those are your air conditioner units that you purchased, that's your property, and you're entitled to keep them. But what I would say is that by the time we are moving forward with all of our repairs to the infrastructure and the heating and cooling system that Ellie, my colleague Ellie, had referenced earlier, I am very confident you're no longer going to have a need or use for those units.
Thank you.
So there's another live question. Will the person with the last three digits, 8303, please unmute? Hi. Hi. Will the person with the last three digits, cellphone starting in 347 and ending in 8303, will you please unmute?
Hi. I wanted to ask a question. Was there ever the offer on the table for us to purchase the apartment? Was that ever on the table for the residents?
Thanks. Thanks so much for that question. Michael or Robert, do one of you want to answer this one?
And you could mute me again because I'm in the supermarket. I'm sorry.
No problem.
And hi, this is Michael from NYCHA. I'm so sorry. Can I have somebody reiterate the question?
Yes. She just asked if NYCHA residents at Harlem River had been offered the opportunity to purchase their units.
Oh, that's a great question. Homeownership is a really difficult housing program for, you know, us to really advance. You know, in public housing and public rental housing and affordable rental housing specifically is an incredibly important public resource. So, you know, we take a lot of pride in our stock is, you know, fulfilling that need. So I can't speak to, you know, decades past, but in recent history, no residents have been offered an opportunity to purchase their apartments at Harlem River.
Thanks so much.
And just to reiterate, at Section 9, the public housing program, which it has been up until the PAC conversion is, the funding source is a rental program specifically.
Great, thank you. And we'll maintain the rental occupancy at Harlem River for the future. So I'd like to ask the person with the number starting in 646 and ending in 4208, please unmute? Hi.
Hello. So I heard something about the air conditioners. Why won't we be able to keep our air conditioners?
Thanks so much for the question. That relates to the mechanical scope that we're doing. So I'd like my colleague Ellie to elaborate further on the necessity of the air conditioners at either apartment or at either complex. And just for clarification, are you in Harlem River 1 or in Harlem River 2?
1.
Okay, thank you.
So you can certainly keep it. I would just say that you're not going to need it. You're going to have, we're going to be providing you a more efficient, better air conditioning system. So, and it'll be in every room as opposed to... I mean, maybe you have an air conditioner in every room right now, but we'll be providing the same. And it's going to have digital controls. It runs more efficiently. It's quieter than your typical window air conditioner. That would be the first reason. The second reason is that the new windows that we're putting in are going to be casement windows, which, and we can provide photos of this in a future meeting. But basically, it means that it almost, the window almost looks like a door that swings out. And the window air conditioners that you currently have on site will not be able to fit in this window. And that, the reason why we're going back with this type of new window has to do with landmarks. It's also a beautiful window, which we're excited to install, but that's the primary reason.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So much. And it looks like we also have a question from Ruben. Do you mind unmuting, please?
Yes. I just got into the meeting, I'm sorry. I just wanted to know, do we have to move out in order for them to start doing the construction?
So I can answer that briefly, that no, all of the work will be done in place. And my colleague Sam had discussed previously the provision for hospital suites based on individuals' personal considerations and whether or not there's a need for them. And so our team will be reaching out on a case-by-case basis as we start doing the work to determine whether or not folks need to go to the hospitality suite. And then, there was also a question related to electricity. I know that this has been asked a couple of times. The buildings are currently master-metered and will remain master-metered. And so tenants will not, residents will not be required to pay electricity. That will still be the responsibility of the owner.
Okay. And also, I know I haven't taken numbers since last year because I had a leak in the kitchen, and I had to close that valve off because if not, it will be more leaking. And they haven't come to fix anything. They said because of COVID-19, they're not going to send anybody. And I know somebody in the same complex was asking you about the leak that she have in the bathroom on the 4G line. I'm above that person, but I don't have a leak. It's just the, it's between the walls going down. And they also know about it. They came and took pictures and everything.
Sorry, I'm not, I don't know if everyone else heard that very loud beeping noise, but I just muted everyone temporarily. Ruben, I'm gonna see if I can do an unmute again for you. Hold on one second.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, sorry about that.
Okay, it's all right. So they know about it. They came, took pictures of the bathroom and everything. And they know about the leak under the sink. I even have the pipe under the sink leaking. And they give me a ticket number, they never came. The pipe, I said, I'm not going to wait for them to come because I wasn't ready to go and do no dishes in the bathroom. So I took the pipe off. I went to Home Depot, I bought it, I fixed it, I put it back. But still, that leak is still going on. So I had to close that valve and they still didn't come yet. So even though if I contact management office and they know about the ticket number, they said they're not going to be able to come and do anything because of COVID-19. So I really don't understand why, you know, they have us waiting for something that is very important. You know, because if the leak kept going on between the wall, they know it's going to break something. You know, so why waiting instead of sending somebody to fix that?
Thanks so much. Michael?
Yeah, I wish I had a very clear and helpful answer for you, Ruben. But I think, I think this just indicates too, the challenges we're facing in really balancing the crises, the multiple crises, right? We've got the public health issues around COVID-19 and the pandemic, which really hinders our ability to do certain things. And you're experiencing that just with day-to-day maintenance and repairs. But on the other hand, a lot of these things are persistent or systemic issues that need to get addressed. Thus, the need to advance these processes and get and start construction as soon as possible. So all I can say is I'm sorry that you're dealing with that. Again, it's a clear indication that, you know, a new structure in terms of management and comprehensive repairs is critical for Harlem River. But I know that doesn't solve your immediate problem. But I just wanted to let you know that I do hear you and I understand how frustrating that is. But I think in, you know, just a few months, hopefully these issues are going to start to resolve.
So when the renovations is going to take place?
Sure, renovations will take place. Sam can speak to this as well. He was mentioning that that closing date, which is when the property will officially convert to the Section 8 funding source, that's the point when repairs will start. But like you mentioned, that's a little bit of a moving target right now. But the best guess is sometime over the summer.
Okay, because I'm not sure if that's what they're waiting for instead of taking care of business with the tenants. Because, you know, I haven't been a tenant here for maybe 15, 16 years, but my rent had never been, you know, unpaid. My rent is paid today. You know, I only call housing if I need to, if I have to. If it's something that I know I cannot fix on my own. But I don't know why they really not paying attention when you calling and you have, you know, this type of issues in your apartment.
Yeah, no, and I'm so sorry. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to suggest that that's what's causing the holdup. What I meant to suggest is that because of COVID-19, we are, and I don't want to speak for this particular situation because I don't know the details, but I know that our maintenance and property management staff can only do certain things right now. And as the pandemic has sort of gotten worse and better, and, you know, we're sort of assessing things day by day as we all are, but their different functions have changed over time. So what you might be describing may, you know, have been off limits in terms of what our ability to solve for was at the moment. That doesn't mean it's not going to get solved before the summer. I didn't mean to suggest that. But with that said, I can't give you a clear idea of when that will be able to get taken care of. So, you know, again, the best advice I have, and I know that this isn't satisfying always, is to continue to work with your property management team. Make sure that they're aware and they'll be able to provide more up-to-date information. So thank you for flagging that for that question.
Thanks, Michael and Ruben. We have a few more questions that are live. Ms. Grant, do you want to unmute?
Hello. This is Michelle Grant, TA President from Harlem River Houses. How can he tell us about the windows and we haven't seen them? I'm not accepting windows that push out for my residents.
I'm sorry, do you mind just clarifying a little, a little bit on your question?
We have a central heat and air, I mean, yeah, central heat and air conditioning, I understand that. But the materials, I haven't seen. So how he gonna sign off on that for push-out windows? We didn't accept that. I didn't accept that. And my residents might not want that. We had them years ago. And I don't want them. And I'm quite sure the rest of my residents is going to agree with me. We want modern, up-to-date windows. We ain't trying to go back. These developments is 84 years old. I'm not trying to go back, we're trying to go forward. We want some up-and-down windows, no push-out windows. The windows we got now is cracked windows, but we got them. But I'm not signing off on no push-out windows. And we ain't even discussed that. So how he gonna tell my residents that's the kind of windows we gonna get? We ain't accept that. Y'all didn't even offer other windows other than that. So we gonna have to talk about that.
Thanks, thanks so much, Ms. Grant. I think we're still in the process of working through the scope and our team will present that at a later date. And we can speak in more detail about the nuances of specific scope items during that time. It looks like Carol Cross also has, their hand raised? Carol, do you mind unmuting, please?
Good evening, all. First of all, you do know we are in the middle of pandemic. So why isn't the proper PPE being enforced? That means you should have booties and you should have full covering, which can be purchased at Staples. It's not right to want these folks to come into the apartment without having the proper PPE. And I notice, even though they have the yellow jacket, the orange jackets, that's not protocol. They should be in, that's why I'm not allowing anyone into my apartment. They're not in the proper protective gear. And looking out for the rest of the tenants, that needs to be enforced. There is no excuses. How can that be addressed? And I also like to know what type of ceiling will be placed in the bathroom instead of that styrofoam?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Ms. Ross. That's a great question. I'd like to ask Sam to discuss a little bit about the COVID safety plan and the affirmation notices and, you know, tenants' rights related to entry into their apartments. And then I'd like my colleague Ellie to discuss the scope related to the bathroom work, please.
Thanks, Ayana. I'm actually going to, I mean, I'll speak on it briefly, but I'm actually going to pass, I'm going to ask NYCHA to comment on this. I don't know if Ian or Kyle or Marissa wants to comment. In terms of the COVID safety protocols we have in place, we put together a safety plan as required by the state of New York that detailed really everything that we're doing, not just PPE, but hand washing and, you know, health screening questionnaires, a variety of different things. We actually dropped off a copy of the COVID safety question, or excuse me, the COVID safety plan at all apartments. You should have received it. If not, we're happy to provide it again. I believe that we left copies of it in the property management office, but I'm going to check that tomorrow to make sure. Other than that, I would say that the guidelines are set by the state and the federal government, and maybe the city as well. So Marissa or Ian or Kyle or Michael, maybe, are you able to speak to how those guidelines were established? Or, you know, just any other thoughts on COVID safety? Because obviously, it's a really serious issue.
Yes, it's a very, excuse me, it is very serious because none of these workers that want to come in and to check to see, you know, what's going on in the apartment are coming in, well, you know, with the proper booties, you know, the disposable booties, as well as the ponchos. There's no way they should be allowed to come into any of those apartments without that full dress. And it's happening, I see it. That's why I won't allow anyone to come into my place. This is not the time just to come in. I don't care if it's five, and the social distance in my apartment makes no sense if they're not being properly. Now, also, can the tenants also test to make sure that these folks are not ill? I mean, this is, it makes no sense to have them come into the apartment. And I don't know if they claim they're being tested. There's no way of us fully knowing that they're being tested. So that's a major concern that I have.
Yeah.
Hey.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ian.
Oh, thanks, Michael. And feel free to follow up if I miss anything. We totally hear that concern and we thank you for bringing this up. We want to emphasize that before going onsite after the start of the pandemic, NYCHA took extreme lengths to make sure that we monitored all federal, state, and city guidelines around what the required PPE was. And then we further thought more about NYCHA's specific needs and built out a specific to NYCHA safety plan and PPE requirement list that incorporates everything from the federal, state, and city level, as well as additional items that we think are important for NYCHA's properties. So this includes testing and making sure that the people coming to your unit are not sick. And it includes making sure they have PPE. I don't, I don't personally know that the booties are a component of what of the guidance we've received from the federal, state, and city. But we can, we can look into that. We do want to make sure you know that whatever we are being told is required, and really not just required, but is the safest option, that's what we're prioritizing. And what we've heard is, is what's in our current safety plan, so.
Okay, but, but, excuse me, not to cut you short, but it still should be required because these folks are coming in from the outside and we're allowing them to come in our apartments. That's not acceptable, okay? I cannot see myself social distancing in my own apartment when I should not have them in my apartment. You know, we, you know, keep in mind, again, some of us have pre-existing issues. And to allow outside folks to come into our apartments and they're not properly wearing the proper, you know, gear, makes absolutely no sense.
And I would emphasize that if you don't feel safe, then with them coming in, then your safety is a priority and we'll need to find a different arrangement for inspection of your unit. Maybe that can be coordinating a time, finding out a specific PPE requirement that makes you feel most comfortable. But our priority is your safety. So if you don't feel safe with the current level of PPE that inspectors have, then reach out to us and we'll work on a different approach for you.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And another question about the bathroom ceiling. What type of ceiling will be replaced?
And I'm sorry, so I do want to address that. And I also think, I know we're very close to time, or we're really actually past time. I do want to have that question answered. Ellie, if you could jump in. And also, Ellie, if you want to just sort of give a preview of the bathroom scope, which we'll be talking about more next meeting. Also, just quickly, Ian, do you want to, I didn't, I don't know if you actually introduced yourself? Just to say, I don't know if folks actually know that you're with NYCHA, so I just wanted to give you the.
Oh, thanks for that, Sam. Sorry about that. I had a conflict earlier, so I joined late. But I'm a director with NYCHA, I work very closely with Michael, who's been speaking to you. And I was at some of the previous meetings.
And I'm sorry, Ayana, to step in. Ellie, do you want to talk about the ceiling for the bathroom? And also just give a quick preview of the bathroom scope?
Sure. So as far as the ceilings, right now at Harlem River 1, for those of you who live in the tower and aren't aware, they have what's called an acoustical tile ceiling, which, this is a first. I haven't seen that in a bathroom. It's not the, not the greatest or most appropriate product. We'll be removing that and putting in a moisture-resistant sheet rock ceiling. So in other words, your typical drop ceiling that you see in a bathroom. The bathroom, look, you heard earlier from a tenant that, you know, the leaks that are existing, the work in the bathroom, in addition to giving you a nicer-looking product, affords us the opportunity of addressing ground zero for leaks. You have a lot of active water and waste going on in a bathroom, right? From your shower supply to the.
And also mice running through.
Right. So from the shower to the sink to the toilet, we open up the walls. We don't do a cosmetic job. There are products out there, you've probably heard on the radio, where you can just drop in a replacement tub or a liner into the existing. We, it's more work and it's more invasive, but we basically like to rip everything out, see what's behind the walls, fix it, and then replace it. This is a, and I think we've tried to say this in a few different ways tonight, and hopefully we're, you know, doing a decent job of getting it across. But this is not a Band-Aid, this is not, you know, these aren't half-measures. The benefit of that would be that we'd probably be in and out of your apartments faster. But we're going to be in your apartments for several days, you know, up to a week for each phase. It's going to be a hassle, we're going to work with you. And we're going to take care of all the issues in the apartment. So in the bathroom, to Sam's point, new bathroom doors with new hardware, a new saddle, new marble saddle as you walk in. We remove the existing flooring, put down new tile floors, new tubs, new diverters. So in other words, a new shower head, new accessories, which means, you know, toilet paper holder, soap dish, towel holder, new toilets, which would be comfort height or ADA accessible as needed. We replace all the grab bars. I think typically there are five in every apartment. We replace the medicine cabinet, we put in a new LED light. We replace the outlets to be, you know, GFCI, ground, full-circuit interrupter outlets. We replace the switches. I think that's primarily it. But basically, and obviously we repaint and repair any plaster on the walls. And we do all of this. I'm not a contractor, I supervise the work. My main, one of my main roles onsite is to make sure and my, and our team, that this work is done safely. I'm concerned about the tenants' well-being and I'm also concerned about our staff's well-being. I mean, they're going into units, they should be always be wearing the proper PPE. We follow a safety plan and our, we want to get in and get out safely without, you know, having any negative impact on anyone. That's our primary reason why we're there. This is supposed to be a positive exercise. It's a, it's a pain in the ass, excuse my language, while it's going on. And it takes a lot of cooperation from the tenants. But we're there to do, you know, to deliver an excellent product.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks so much, Ellie, appreciate that. And I'd like to pass it off to my colleague Donald from West Harlem.
Oh, I'm sorry, I actually don't, I'm sorry, Ayana. I don't know, Donald, we didn't actually chat about just like agenda, but I just wanted to give you a chance to, I don't, we didn't, you know, it's on me, didn't ask you in advance if you'd be comfortable just saying a quick word and introducing yourself. That's all right? Actually, you know what, Donald might, is Donald in here? Say, did you know if Donald was able to join?
He said that he would, but I didn't see him on here earlier.
Okay. In that case, Judy, do you want to take us out?
Sure. I've been typing to you throughout the chat and I'm sorry if I missed any questions. I promise it wasn't personal, but my hands are getting tired. No, I'm just joking. But really appreciate everyone joining tonight. I think that we covered a lot of information. We know that there's a lot of information that we're providing and that this is really, really personal because these are your homes. And I think the thing that we hope that we're communicating to you is that we really want to hear from you. We really want you to be engaged in this process. We need your information so that we can design a scope that works for you and that addresses all of the concerns that you have. We know that we're asking you to take a leap of faith and to trust us. And we're going to do everything that we can to do right by your trust. And just really appreciate that you took the time out. And just really appreciate that you took the time out of your lives tonight to join this. If you have any questions or concerns or thoughts that we didn't fully address in tonight's session, we really encourage you to reach out to us and to contact us by email, by telephone. If those don't work for you, you can, you know, hopefully those do work for you. And we'll do our best to be in touch and to really safeguard your trust. But thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.